Just push it.
Okay.
And it'll stop, and then just close that.
Cool.
Alright.
You probably know the right.
All meeting order, please write your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go to her, please, Paul.
Here.
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 Go down number two for the comment. I'll question comments, but if you're directed to the mayor, each speaker will be given three minutes to comment on a topic on agenda item only. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak here. If you have something to do, please come forward. So, move to that number three, reports of officers. We have from the mayor. First thing I want to, I don't want to know about, I grabbed it straight from my keynotes, so I'll look at it quickly. Unplug, this is Metro Safety. It's the ninth annual Metro Safety poster essay contest. It's for students K through 12. The theme is Unplugged for Safety. The deadline is January 30th, 2015. Prize awards are first place is an I-DAD, second place is $250, third place is $100. Poster contest awards are one first, second, and third place winner will be selected for, from each grade. Essay contest, the one first place winner will be selected from three grade groups, elementary, middle, and high school. And we'll get this posted out in the lobby, but if you have any questions, you can go out to their website, which is www.metrocontest.com, and you'll see these posted out in the lobby. So, no, it's the inner contest, or the poster and the essay contest. Alright, with that, we need to, who else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm sorry my family is for missing all the Saturday festivities. If you could have been here, you would have been here. Congratulations to the fire department for a great event, and senior committee, I hear you had a full house there, had a visit with the governor, that my family would have attended. However, we were out of state, depending on the weather, so we weren't able to attend. And secondly, what I'd like to approach is I have been approached by several residents regarding people who are getting petition signed in and around softwood property. I was even asked by one person to show me where it is in writing that you're not doing. Now, this happened just before I came out of town, so I passed that information out, and I asked the attorneys to handle it, and they gave us the information. Today, when I got back, I looked through some past minutes to try and find where it is written, just so that we can follow you on the same page. I think everybody wants everybody to have the right opportunity to do what they need to do to run into the next election. However, if we can be fair, and we can follow the rules, or people are going to come to my office and ask me why this is happening. Now, I will tell you, as January 18th, 2011, trustee Williams was the first piece of person to bring it up, and she talked about how people had been coming into the village hall and signing petitions, and how it's never been done before, and how there was never written petitions, and how buttons and signs, and everything. Now, so these are all in the village minutes, so if anybody wants to dispute what I'm saying, I have the dates of every set of minutes, open board meeting minutes, where passing out petitions at board meetings and in and around the village property, where it's been mentioned, and several board members that are sitting here right now were part of the people who had that discussion. It has never been allowed, it is not per se, in original form, but as January 18th, 2011, trustee Williams said, on January 25th, when I addressed it, where I said village clerk Williams has requested that discussion regarding policies and procedures pertaining to election pedantic and election electioneering be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Village clerk Williams asked what is allowed in and around the village of Williams. This is not the first time we've discussed this. On January 3rd, 2011, it was also decided that the village board has decided that it allows us to be fair and able to all candidates, that we should come up with some type of ordinance to address this. February 2011, just before the legislative election, so we got this decided, it was too late to really make a lot of that happen. February 2013, what we did do, however, was we passed the ethics ordinance. However, the ethics ordinance only pertains to village employees signing petitions and doing electioneering within the village hall and grounds. So, village employees, we encourage trustees or anybody that currently works for the village who's running an election. That is addressed in the ethics act, when the ethics ordinance has passed. However, we did not go far enough to create ordinance that applies to everyone. So, what I have asked the attorneys to do, and I'm asking the board to consider this, next Tuesday, we'd like to put it out in the agenda. The attorneys are preparing an ordinance that everyone can follow, just to be fair. I think everybody should believe that we should all do the right thing, and that we should all be fair in what we're doing. Everybody is afforded the opportunity to become a trustee in the next election, but that is not how the rules. There is an election in April 2015, you can have a response over it. There are no more packets to be provided, you should be called the candidate side, available on www.corkcountyclerk.com, or consult an election attorney. And if there's any other information we need, you can contact Cook County Clerk. Because at a local level, I hesitate to provide any information, because it might be this one's true in some kind of way. So, I have been told by the attorneys many years ago, that it's not my job to provide information. So, if you have any other questions, please feel free, as far as your petitions, to contact village attorney or www.corkcountyclerk.com, or call Cook County Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, village attorney, I have a question. Village clerk, I just wanted to clarify, you just stated, so what is the determination as of right now? As far as someone wanting to get petition signed in the hallway, on the grounds, sidewalk in front of village hall, all those things happen? And I'm just asking, what is the determination right now, as we stand right now? What happens?
Well, I can tell you what, the interpretation, I would say is a gentleman's agreement, that the board has always had and always passed on to people who were running for an election, that it is not allowed inside a village board, a village building, any village building. This is a gentleman's agreement, it's always been that way. Pins, signs, petitions, and whatnot, anything during the election. And the ethics ordinance that was passed in 2013, it specifically states that employees are prohibited, prohibited and can't be fined to have any type of petition, seeing sign within the village hall, you can look at that ordinance, and I do believe that you did not approve that ordinance, but three board members did, and one was saying it was absent. But in that ethics ordinance, it does specifically relate to employees. But my question is, you're asking me right now the same thing the gentleman asked me last week. Where is it in writing, right now? It's not.
No, I'm not asking where's the determination.
The determination is, in the midst of several forties, which I researched today, it has been stated by trustee Williams and others, and myself, that it has never been common practice to allow this. Is it in writing, and I said right now that not employee could be fined for doing it? No. So, this is why I'm asking the board to please, trustee vice committee is actually going to be reviewing the ordinance, I believe this meeting is tomorrow night. I believe the attorneys are going to prepare this ordinance and be ready to review tomorrow night. And I'm asking that place on the very next agenda for discussion by the board. Of course, it won't be approved till the following week. So, right now, trustee purchase, your guests are doing it, because I've been here for five years, we've been here longer. It's still discussed except for these.
It has been discussed, as far as the pins, parents and industry, I had a debate, we have a debate quite actually, they were able to bring their signs and things like that, but that was after petition. But yes, we did, it was, I know a person that was actually running for office a couple of times, they wore their pins, and we asked them to take their pins already. And usually, within the rotunda of the village is when we ask not to have people to sign petitions, but in the hallways, in front of the village hall, and things like that, on the grounds. You know, I've seen that happen, not just this time, I've seen that happen in another election, but not in the rotunda. Inside the rotunda, we've always had that you go, do your camp, campaign, and electioneering in there. But in the hallway, I've seen that happen several times, it happened this past Saturday, you know, and then also in front of the village hall, people, you know, that were in front. But you were right, I did notice that we did ask them not to do any electioneering inside the rotunda. So, that's what I was asking, was there anything? So, as of right now, there is no reason, but like I stated before, it was usually within the inside of the rotunda, not outside.
Absolutely, and like I said before, when I was first running, I was told not to bring my petitions inside any village building. I heard the petitions are being signed in the village hall, in the hallways, at the fire department, at various other buildings and on the grounds. Grounds apparently is acceptable, within village buildings is apparently not acceptable. But the question that I was asked, where is it in writing? That's why I'm responding in an open board meeting, so that everybody is on the same page. There is nothing in writing to address this. Hopefully, within the next two weeks, this board will be passing an ordinance that specifies exactly what is allowed and what's not. I'm not going to be the person that can tell somebody what they can and cannot do, I don't have that authority. This board has the authority. So, when this board reviews the ordinance next Tuesday, it's up to this board to decide whether rotunda should be where is prohibited, whether hallway is where is prohibited, if this building or all buildings, this is up to this board to decide. All I'm saying is, this will be hopefully on the agenda next Tuesday for this board to consider, and finally, this will close the gap by what's acceptable, what's not, who thinks it is okay, who thinks it's not. All I've asked before is everybody play by the rules, and if we don't make the rules clear enough, then we can't play by them. Everybody's got their own interpretation. So, hopefully, you all agree that this is something that we should have done to pass the law, and it's being brought back down in plenty of time before the next election. Thank you very much.
Alright. Should be some interesting discussion. And Dean, I was going to start, attorney, I'm going to grab it.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a follow-up on that discussion, we will put together draft ordinance, and then it's up to, obviously, the mayor with more to make changes, will also include some sample ordinance as from other communities for you to consider. Because then, depending on how far above limit you want to put into place. Just a couple of things to report, Mayor. Prior to tonight's hearing, we had a hearing in regards to Level Sports Bar for revocation of their liquor license based upon some alleged misconduct over the last couple of months through state statute of the general liquor code. The mayor, whose little liquor commissioner, was able to close it down for seven days if there's a finding that the conduct is nuisance, or it's a threat to the public safety and welfare of the community. We had started a hearing this afternoon, or this evening, about five o'clock. The license, he was there, we tried to resolve it, short-going, three hearing, and scheduling a subsequent hearing to suspend or further suspend or go for license, we're not able to reach an agreement. So, it's a hearing set for this Friday at eight thirty AM. I'm going to look for the assistance of the chief, we're doing the event as the officers are the bidet officers. So, chief, I'll let you know, the officer said okay. Lastly, I just received two correspondence from attorney general, who is looking into possible open meetings and violations, based upon the request review, they are seeking further inquiry, and pertains to the housing commission, a recent meeting, as well as the town hall meetings conducted by trustee purchase. I ask that everyone cooperate with attorney general and my office. Thank you.
I think I did not hear my name at the last, you said in regards to what?
We received, I've got copies of the notice from attorney general, possible violations of the open meeting act.
For the town hall meeting?
Yes.
How would that be a violation of the meeting act?
It's under their authority.
No, I'm just asking you as the attorney, how would that be a possible violation? It's a town hall meeting, it's not a village board meeting, it's not even, we're not even, you know, voting on anything like that, it's open to the public, so how would it be a violation of open meeting?
They're looking into whether the board, if this whole board violated the open meeting act, when it's three or more board members attending the town hall meeting hosted by village trustee Kurt Burges.
Okay, I don't remember three or one, when the mayor was there, and I think Linda Washington was there, I think that's only the only people that I knew that were there as far as trustees, and that was just, you know, that's okay. I have no problem with that. That means I must be doing something right, but that's okay. I just wanted to know, how that could be a open meeting act violation, but looks at...
Again, we're giving the information, there was three or more trustees of the mayor there.
I see why I had to move my meeting.
I'll give a copy next, no question. Okay? Thank you, please, Mayor.
I hope that's all.
Sure.
In regard to trustee purchase's comments, is that all of his town hall meetings, if there are more, the three trustee members there, or his last meeting that he had, they, and question, the question survived his last meeting, is there all of his meetings in general?
It's the terrible meetings.
In general?
In general.
Okay, because I have attended some of his meetings, but I have not attended all of his meetings.
Attorney general's officer will look for who has attended the other meetings.
Move to who can share, you shared it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2014 MRT resurfacing project is essentially complete. Contractor Gallagher Asphalt has submitted their final invoice to us, and once everything is substantially done, will be recommended payment. And moving on to the water treatment plant improvements project, overall, the project is seventy-five percent complete. Startup Well Free is complete. Testing has been conducted, and bacteriological and BOC testing have both been negative. So, we are submitting the results to the IAP for approval, so they can issue operating permit. It is even possible that Well Free will be supplying water to the system this very week. And with Well Free operational, all work will now be concentrated at water treatment plant one. Includes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much, move down to the floor, reports of trustees and board committees, press, reps, trustee classmate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have only two things here, I'm just reminding everybody that November eleventh, we're going to have a grand show over at community center. That will start at nine AM and run until three, so looking for people, if they want to have tables, tables are ten dollars. Even come and set up at eight o'clock, I'll be there later, the clock opens up the building. Still looking for people to run tables, and maybe help people find somebody to run the concession chair. October twenty-fifth will be our second trunking tree, that'll be right over there by the community center. The parade will start at Rickover at eleven thirty, to march down to the community center. They'll be able to trigger our trunking tree at the cars there, the people have, and they'll go into the community center, or the weather guys will be outside, I will have the auction, our rapper, the punk is. Also, I have secured that we will be having our Santa parade on December sixth. So, that'll start, we haven't had time scheduled yet, but we have decided that that will be our Santa arriving in the village that day.
What was that?
December sixth. We'll have, probably ten in the morning, but we haven't got that quick from Jeff. So, we're trying to check with Sam to make sure he can make it that early.
Thank you, we'd like to, uh, viewification committee. And, wait, I'm trying to show up this down. Three nine four is tax real planning, and maintenance has been done by the viewification committee. Police Department, we've got slow progress on the redevelopment of police Department, and I think Kevin will be looking for your assistance on some of the work that needs to be done, all of that police Department, which gives any money, if we get your assistance, you know, you got things you're working on, so we need free time. Community Center, the viewification committee planted flowers, we maintained, we control this, allow this, and it's kind of an overview of what's happened. Now, we're starting to take some of those flowers out, the viewification committees are moving some of those, and trying to give us for the harvest book, and I can't say that I'm doing the work, viewification committee has some, got some hard-looking volunteers, I really appreciate the work they've done. The municipal center this last year did a fantastic job. If you look at all the flowers they planted this last year, the cleaning up, and if you go out there and look currently, with the, I don't know if you know what it's called, harvest, you know what it's called, fall look, it looks great, I appreciate all the work they did preparing for the governor this last Saturday, so it's beautiful out there, it continues to look beautiful. The memorial, I know there's ongoing re-weed work that has to be done, which is fantastic. The memorial, I know there's ongoing re-weed work that has to be done, we did a fantastic job working on that. The atrium, when you're going out the door, look at the atrium, all the work that's been done out there. We've got a pot that was donated, and they've got some mums in there now, so I'm again trying to keep that, that looking good. Fall decorations, think about these, the Smith's Farm donated the material, a lot of materials and stuff that you see that's out there right now for fall. So Smith's Farm has been heavily involved in working with the village, and we appreciate all the work they've done there. Adopt a site locations, we start, as we start preparing for next year, we see that the businesses, we know all the flowers that they donated. Now, the committee is pulling all those flowers out, bringing all the, the work, preparing it for the winter months. And again, we'll be working on getting some more businesses involved in our committee for adopting. You know, I was always told I'm saying this wrong, but adopt, adopt a spot. If you know anyone who wants to get involved next year, right now, we currently have three businesses, Bolt, Bolt Mo's, Smith's Farm, and Do It Best. So we have other locations, we saw those, I think, like businesses that would like to get involved, like to adopt a spot. We are looking at maybe expanding next year if we have more businesses involved, so kind of gives you an overview of what has been done this last year. You see the committee members out there working now, as they, they pull the plants out and prepare the ground for fall and for winter, so. As the mayor, I appreciate all the work that you're doing, it's very noticeable, we appreciate your dedication, thank you very much. Move to intergovernmental relations committee, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CETA is going to host here on the twenty-third of October, a home energy bill payment assistance program. It'll be here from nine to one. It says we're going to senior, salt village senior site, we're going to have it in here, because I think they may be doing something that day, so we're having it right here in the rotunda. And the qualifications would be a senior. The next qualification would be a family that has a child six years or under. And the third qualification would be a disability, a disability individual. I do have flyers in the back, and kind of gives you a little guideline, and it tells you what to bring. Some of the things you need to bring when you come, proof of current thirty-eight growth income for all household members. A copy of the most recent heat and electric bills, if you pay your own electric bill. And if you do, you must provide the entire bill. Proof of social security numbers from all household members. And if a member of your household receives the TA NF branch, you must bring your medical card. And also applicants that have the utilities in the rent must bring a copy of the rental agreement, which states monthly rental amount that utilities are included, and the landlord's contact information. They will, there's other projects that'll be going on, but this particular one, we've had this last year, I think, maybe we signed up maybe thirty-five, forty people, with, we signed, actually signed up, and they got assistance. I'm looking here at nine to one, last time, we had to close the doors at, I think it was twelve o'clock, because they haven't, had, at that time to process, so they can be out here. But they will be here, to actually process what you need to have done, and you get your determination at that particular time. That's all I have. The date is October twenty-third, from nine to one.
Look to neighborhood watch committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report tonight that I am very, very excited about the Neighborhood Watch Committee and all the things that we are doing. We had a very effective and a great meeting on last night, we had a packed house. And we had new block club captains that came on board, that wanted to be block club captains in the village. And I'm happy to announce that we actually have someone from every area, except for maybe three areas within the village. So the committee has been working very, very hard, and I just want to give them kudos. We had, the mayor surprised us to stop by last night, and the committee was so excited to see him. He just stopped by to say hello, and to check on the, of the committee, and they had so many questions. We would pass our deadline, but we were so excited that you gave the chance to stop by, Mayor. A lot of questions that they had, that sometimes they can't ask, because they get the days confused, the first and third Tuesday, and the second and fourth Tuesday. But last night, they could ask anything, so that was really a great meeting that we had with you when you stopped by. And thank you for coming out of your way just to do that on last night. And finally, I want to say that the Neighborhood Watch is working with the police department. I've had a chance to speak with Chief Olivas, and we are excited about the direction that the Neighborhood Watch Committee is moving in. And I want to have a chance to sit down and talk with trustee Williams, I know that the police alliance has been renamed to COPS. And there is a difference between what the police alliance do and what the Neighborhood Watch program does. And so I think we're trying to maybe cross up our committees of what we do, so I wanted to give a chance to sit down and talk with you, so we could define some of those parameters and work it out, the logistics of that. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, public relations and community outreach partnership committees, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update, the public relations committee met two weeks ago to discuss student government day. As I said before, it'll be here before we know it. So we've begun to discuss procedures, the timeline, and the essay topic, all of which have been determined. So we are going to be working on that, and also we discussed the village sticker process. We are going to do the contest again this year, and by fabulously last year, so we're really excited about it. Just a reminder, any salt village child between the ages of eight to twelve, in grades three through seven, can participate. We will be reaching out to, to the District One sixty-eights in the next week or so, to speak with them and ask them for their participation. Again, with the village sticker project, as well as student government day, I do see a more number in the audience. So we will be definitely working, track to work with District One sixty-eights, to make sure we kind of hold this project out. Student government day goes every year, goes great, and the village sticker contest was actually really awesome last year, and I hope that all of the village residents that are in the audience have their village sticker on their car that was designed by a caregiver. So we're really excited about that, we're going to do that again this year. For the community outreach partnership committee, we had a meeting scheduled for today that I did cancel, as my family, and I just got back into town last night, so didn't have time to prepare, we'll be meeting next week. And the board was informed, as was Chief Olivas, I remember to remind him, that we didn't have a meeting before he came here all by himself again. So I did, I did tell him this time, sorry about the horrible person, and that concludes our report.
Thank you, trustee, with that, no further reports of departments, commissions, Friday department, nine-one-one commission, Kurt Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past three weeks, the park responded to twenty-nine calls, one hallway, seven medical assists, one vehicle accident, three CO alarms, twelve firearms, one child struck, one vehicle fired, one possible structural fire, and two smell of fire in the burning house. Also, the Fire Convention Bureau finished the Fire Convention talks with the schools. Because of the holiday, winners will be chosen by bureau members, and they will take the prizes to the winners at their schools. Chief wants to thank everyone for coming out to their own house, and a special thank you to Advance Home for the Refreshments. It's a pleasure to see the governor of Saturday, he probably used the village, and this weekend, we will be sending four crooks to champagne before I finish.
Thank you very much. Move to the police department, chief Olivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to first off, report from nine-twenty-three to present, police department responded to one thousand twenty-one calls for service. One hundred ninety-six of those were traffic-related, fifty-two suspicious persons, six shots fired, one hundred and fourteen other calls for service, forty-three juvenile problems, thirty-seven domestic, seven one ambulance calls, and seventy-four burglar alarms. I'd also like to report that the lease purchase agreement is in on the new vehicles, we're waiting to deliver them. The tendering, the mayor, and village attorney, those papers tonight, and also the village clerk. And a positive note, I would also like to announce that the police department was awarded a COPS grant this year for one new police officer, that's a great thing for a village. He is, that grant is an amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for two years. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, chief, great job. Move to the fore, the fore, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple items here. October's Streets Week has started, so we'll be out for the rest of the week cleaning up the streets. Please don't add any leaves out right now, if you have them, they'll leave for when we need next month. So everything else just has to be bagged up and delivered through, through a republic or another scavenger. Transcutting is ongoing, we'll have our final cut of all locations for the year. After that is done, we ask residents, please, don't not drop your debris on the ground. It collects up, especially in the wintertime of the fall months, because we're not cutting the grass and repairing the bases. And the town will very quickly look pretty bad. So please help us, help yourselves, by keeping the community clean during the winter months. Trees, we have some residential complaints on trees, any long, touching car, that case, we've completed three other locations. And the ash tree process will start mid-November through December, hopefully the winter months will give us better, you know, than last year. We had very little time to go out and cut trees with the snow being as bad as it was. Streetlights is ongoing, we repaired about four streetlights, one in Calvage, a couple on Florence Avenue. And over the weekend, we had pulled a, put a conduit in the ground over in Deer Creek for a wire fault problem. We did run a little bit on the wire, so we had ordered, which hopefully will likely be repaired by tomorrow, we'll have the wire pulled and that, that backlit by tomorrow. Pot hole complaints, a lot of residents, some streets in town, they're starting to, a little bit of terremation of the thinnest of the streets. We have, the edge of the road is coming apart a little bit, one of the specific ones was two twenty-four street. So we went up and down that whole block, and what we did was, we called scabbing in the asphalt, which is the side edge to the curb, basically bringing it to a level area, and filling in all the, the cracks, to seal the road up for now. This road will be added to a project hopefully down the line, and there's probably three or four of them in the same condition, hopefully we'll add in some projects down the line here. Landscaping locations, all the landscaping locations will follow any pavement work. We do have some driveways we had replaced already, two twenty-second, a landis, a patching. Each one of these locations, when the driver's repaired, we did landscaping these locations. Any residents that had anything out front that has not been landscaped, or we, looks to appear that we have dug it, or at least that it's dug, please call, leave your address, and we will look into it, sometimes these are nycor digs, and they do not landscape work away. Customer service, our customer service person works all day at appointments, and all water-related items. So any complaints residents have in town here, they call up to the village hall, they set up an appointment, we have an individual that can go out, house the house, any complaints on water, whether it's your water meter, whether it's rusty water complaint, pressure problems, anything within the house. If you call the village hall, set up an appointment, we can definitely have somebody come out, and at least evaluate the situation, and see if there's anything we can help you with, or at least once you're in the right direction. We also had, last week, we had the north side shut-off list. One of the concerns in town is our digs in our jet list, so each list that we get for a shut-off, we do the shut-off list as quickly as possible. And then we receive the list back from front office, and we will go and address all the digs and jets. At this point right now, we approached about twelve of them, and we have some work to add to the list, but we'll continue as, as we can. Let's see here, fire hydrants, been a big thing recently, we did place an order for seven fire hydrants. We just got confirmation today that they'll be delivered on Monday, the twenty-second. So we will be doing a fire hydrant this weekend, replacement over on Norwood, on the east side of town. It's an ongoing one, but they will be working on that, replacing the new, putting a new hydrant in. And once we receive the other ones, we have locations in town, more vital where there's a hydrant maybe closer to another one, but we'll be working on. The first set of hydrants will be put into those locations. Ongoing with the rain we're having here, also we've had the plants that flooded streets. We do, on any rainfall, after a certain amount, we do have employees during the business day, and we receive after hours, come out to clear flooded streets. They do take the debris away, they do not leave in the parkway, but if somebody has left the debris in the parkway, it's called the village hall, the next business day. And we will come by and pick that up. And most of the time, we do not pick it up that evening, we are just going to open up the streets, and we do not want to waste a lot of overtime and evening hours, so we will come back the next day and pick that up. Facility lighting, recently, we've had some lights out in front here, some damage done to some of the pedestal lights out here. Nothing major, each one has been reset, we have employees working in the building here doing other lighting issues, we have some boulders out, we have some plumbing issues, which is just normally, aeration, and just general repairs, ongoing still. And my leaf program, alright, next month will be our leaf program. The leaf program will be, it'll start on the ninth, we'll have an in-between skip week, and then at the end of the month, all the way through completion. Once we've been down the street from the first section of time, we'll not come back. Residents, please remove your leaves off the streets, there are tickets can be issued, and this does block up the storm sewers. It does cause a lot of problems, once they freeze in the street for plows, and hazards to the roadway, because it will freeze on the road, and the salt will not burn through that. So please help us by at least getting it out, if you want it picked up by the village, if not, back it up and have the scavenger service taken. And the last couple items is, we're wintertime here, and out of the age groups we have, we're getting everything outfitted up right now to prepare for winter. We're being told that it's going to be a similar winter to last year, some have said worse, but I hope not. As salt prices go this year, just for everyone who doesn't know, they're extremely high, and we do not know why that is. And nobody seems to be able to answer the question at this time, but we will put salt down as needed, at this point, we do have salt on hand, so we should be fine until the year. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Kevin, move to administrative services, Ms. Shetan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple things. For the month of September, Sue Cole wrote a hundred and seventy-eight tickets, a hundred and four of them were for grass, and nineteen were for property maintenance for businesses that didn't comply with the letter that they got sent. A couple of the businesses came into court, and they got continuance, as told to remember. And the expansion for the children's learning center, their second location and survey work is going pretty good. They are taking over the currency exchange also, just so you guys know. And I think that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you very much. Move to homeland security, Agent Shetan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past three weeks, we responded to twenty-one calls, unstructured firearms, civil alarms, unvehicle accidents, twelve firearms, unvehicle fire, three school patrols, and one child.
I'm kind of curious, child stuff.
I believe this, he got, his arm got stuck in a, in a playground facility inside of a school. He was playing, so he got shot, and in a bunch of time, the rioters, the child was afraid of...
Just caught my attention, child stuff. Alright, thank you very much. Human relations commission, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
House of commissions, Commissioner Holland?
No report.
Thank you, senior committee, Ms. Snixton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The salt village senior committee would like to thank all the volunteers, public works, and the participants for a very successful, love it annual senior citizens spaghetti dinner last Saturday. Details will be forthcoming, I did not have time to prepare anymore. Want to congratulate all the fifty-fifties, special prizes, and door prize winners. And I want to especially thank the committee members that made donations and was very dedicated to the job Saturday. dedicated to the job Saturday. Our new silver sneaker program started off with a bang this morning, so we hope that it will continue to grow. The paperback book exchange is very successful with many participants and donors. Our monthly blood pressure screening and monthly movie continues. And the three senior organizations are still looking for people. We have the Sunday group on the 2nd and 4th at 3:00 p.m. 1st and 3rd Monday for the sunshineers at 7:00 p.m. 2nd and 4th Wednesday for leisure timers, except for the Halloween party on October 22nd, which will be at 2:00 p.m. BMW Crossroads, still looking for people, that's motorcycle group on the 3rd Tuesday, 7:00 p.m. Ceramics, every Wednesday, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. And every Sunday, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., the South Village Bluegrass. They still provide the bluegrass, country western and gospel music for those who like dancing or listening to their music. Next Sunday, October 19th, will be their pizza night. Tomorrow, October 15th, at 10:00 a.m., the Golden Ages at Jones Community Center, 220 East 15th Street in Chicago Heights, is holding a health screening at 10:00 a.m. The BCP Home Healthcare will give a program at 10:30, lunch at 11:30 at a cost of $5. You do need to call 708-757-5395 for information and a reservation. The township is still taking appointments for their flu shot on Wednesday, October 21st, 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Their senior community luncheon, their football kickoff is Thursday, October 23rd, at Bud Woody Golf Club, with entertainment all in a band. It's $4 for township seniors, non-t township is eight. And the ticket deadline, I said, is October 17th, but I heard that the tickets are selling out fast. They have their basic line dancing, four-week session for $8. Wednesday and Friday cheer exercise, free legal assistance, blood pressure screening and our smart driving courses, and course health insurance assistance, especially for the Medicare Part D. And they have their low-cost senior wheels within the township at 708-754-8200. For any other senior events, call 708-754-9400, extension 244, for additional information and services. Just a reminder, Medicare Part D re-enrollment begins October 15th. Township offices and age options are available to assist. Frauds and scams are targeting our seniors, so do not believe callers who claim to be from IRS, your bank, credit card, social security, et cetera, unless you initiated the call. Recently, several seniors and some suburbanans have been scammed. Personal data theft is growing, so guard the Medicare ID and edit your credit card. And be sure to review your MSN, which is Medicare Summary Notice. And just be sure, never, never let any unknown person in your home. The Senior Medical, Medical Control, SMT, their model, protect, detect and report. So protect yourself from Medicare errors, fraud and abuse. Detect, learn to detect potential error or fraud and abuse. Report if you suspect you are a target of errors, fraud, abuse. You can report it by calling an age option. They have an 800 number, 699-9043, or their local number, 708-383-0258. The next senior committee meeting is Thursday, November 13th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you, this ends my report. Oh, I do have one other thing. Derek, did you say that you were using the senior center and you're not?
We're not, we're going to use here because I don't know. You may have something on that day, so we're going to use the local center here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to ad number six, consent agenda, do you have any issues or like anything removed? Very not as for motion to approve consent agenda, Edith.
Second.
Motion second, go ahead, please, call.
First.
Yes.
Board. Myers. Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Lawyers.
Yes.
Motion carriers, we have our senior business, I have number A, motion to approve town schedule and solutions for September 24th, 2014 through October 14th, 2014, our motion to approve. So.
Second.
Motion number eight, question or comments? Here now, go ahead, please, call. Virges.
Yes.
Board.
Yes.
Myers. Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Lawyers.
Yes.
Okay, in this meeting, so we'll go to C, motion to approve settlement of case JY13J063711X, Yosolyn versus South Village, Village of South Village, in the amount of $7,000 fiber calories, motion to approve. The motion is there second. Motion second, any questions or comments? Here now, go ahead, please, call.
Virges.
Yes.
Board.
Yes.
Myers. Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Lawyers.
Yes.
Motion carriers. I'm E, motion to approve borrowing $22,790 from the CN fund to reimburse the IHDA, is our motion to approve. So. Second. Motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, go ahead, please, call. Virges.
Yes.
Board.
Yes.
Myers. Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Lawyers.
Yes.
Motion carriers, I'm E, motion to approve borrowing $22,790 from the CN fund to reimburse the IHDA, is our motion to approve. So. Second. Motion is second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Justice Virges.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the lawyers, by us paying this out of this fund, is it legal to do that, that we did enter into a contract with IHDA? The board did not enter into a contract, so can we legally do this? I know that we talked about it yes, last week, but you weren't here. So I just wanted to find out, can we legally pay a contract that we did enter into as a board, from the money that comes from this entity?
Your question's got a two-part, if it's, is there a legal obligation?
Right, no, no, no.
You have the village to pay?
No, I'm not, I didn't say, I didn't say legal obligation. No, I know it's not a legal obligation. I'm talking about can we legally do this? Because we didn't have a contract with them. We didn't enter into a contract with them as a board, but we're going to use the money that's, that's earmarked as something else, which I understand, but I just wanted to make sure, can we legally do that? That's why I was going to ask about you, but you weren't here, so.
Yeah, but if you say that you don't have a contract.
We don't have a.
The village and who?
No, between I, between IHDA, we don't have a contract with them. The board never entered into a contract with them. It was entered into by the housing commission.
There was an agreement, so again, is there obligation on behalf of the village?
No, 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 not obligation, can we legally do this? Can we legally pay this money?
See, that goes towards the CN fund.
No, it's not.
The money is done from that fund as long as you pay it back. So that's a different question, for as far as the housing commission, you know, that there is no contract with the village, with these individuals that did the work, is the village applicant, can they pay it? The village certainly could pay it, but are the obligated to pay it and they had to possibly bring a suit, you know, for, for the work that was performed to enforce it, right, to the housing commission and take it back to the village. So there's no legal contract, I've seen what the work was done.
Right.
So I guess, figuring that people should be paid. And so I guess, the real question is if you could use the money from the fund.
Right, that was to pay this particular entity. We've used the money for something that we actually entered into and the money didn't come in, into the village. We did this before. But it was something that the village actually entered into, we didn't get, we didn't have the money. This time, it was something that we didn't agree or we didn't enter into it with them, or we're going to use village money, or the money is earmarked as something else that was clearly owed of that, of that fund. I just wanted to, I mean, I would like to do it, I just want to make sure that it's legal, that's all.
Well, we reviewed the CN fund, the paperwork, just before the meeting. And as you stated, I think it's been done before.
It was, we did it before.
The village borrowed, paid back. I think we're trying to make a distinction that that was something that the village board itself authorized to do and that they paid it. That's a different question.
Right.
I looked into it, whether the village can borrow from that fund, pay that fund back.
Right.
It's not restricted.
Right, that's not, I'm just wondering.
You have noticed the CN, 11-0, that you're using a dollar amount to pay back, where you get the, the money. As far as, if the village is actually the allocator of the hook to pay these individuals, you know, I wasn't asked to look into that. Again, there's no question that the work was done. And if they were bringing a lawsuit, somebody would have to pay.
No, I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure because, you know, I didn't want someone to come back later and say, well, you, you paid the money and we never got it back. Or I, because I was really disagreeing that I didn't get a copy of it. And there is no date, the states that we're going to actually get the money. They said that they owe us that, which I didn't know at the time, that we, as a village, were supposed to pay and we would get reimbursed from this grant. I didn't know that until last week, the week before last, I was told the week before last. But now, I understand that, I just wanted to make sure that no, there's no legal ramifications that would come back and say that we took money out of this account, that we were supposed to, to pay something that we didn't enter the agreement with. That's what, that was my question.
You know, I didn't review the grant documents or that agreement. I just looked into whether that money, how short-term from that fund.
I think the key word is we're borrowing, we're not taking the money to pay, we're not planning on getting money back, so it is borrowing.
I'm looking at it, because get that money, it was, our whole list is.
Right, oh, I'm well aware of that grant, I mean, I'm, I'm well seeing.
Nothing granted, CN.
See, I'm well aware of that, I was part of that, but I'm just wondering, and we did pay it back before, but like I stated before, we paid back something that we as a board agreed on. This is something that we had no input in. And I'm just hoping that, you know, I don't want to say the president to say, okay, well, we missed this or we missed that, can we use this for that or whatever case may be. I just want to make sure we're doing it legally, that's the only, that's the only way.
Well, I'd say, part of this agreement, you know, there's a semi-annual reporting for everyone, so I would not wait to that period, I would report to them very easily. There's a paper trail of the property of that funds. But as you know, there's certain items that are listed out for what to be done. If the village didn't repay the fund, the village responsible for, for the line item from the money wasn't paid back.
You mean it's hard?
If the village goes, pays these employees, whoever, a couple of the grass, and then they submit for the grants, it's a paid first type of a grant that the village has to pay out and wait for the current money.
And the grant money that we can't.
If it never came, then we have a shortage and then the village would be responsible for that line item.
Even if we never had any input or doing anything, but even if we never agreed, agreed upon, I mean, even if we never voted on it, we would still be liable even if.
Yeah, for, for the line item, I don't know, I had, looked through a lot of the sale of line items, but I know there's some contingency and all the work that needs to be done, for that brings that reimbursement fund, the village of its general fund will have to pay for that work, the general fund that, on this point, it's up there. Okay. Any questions or comments? Here now, go ahead, please, call. Virges.
Present.
Board.
Yes.
Myers. Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Lawyers.
Yes.
Motion carriers. Is that a rate, the sign is counted from the board of trustees?
I just have a comment. For the park structure spending, a former South Village resident came up to me and asked about haunted houses and talked about the one that we used to have over in San Jose, called St. Church. And I started thinking, something about possibility, I think a church group did that one, that many years ago, and then it was other people who kind of took it on. But regardless, either way, might be something to think about for next year. They had a couple of different suggestions. They talked about a concrete tree, like they told them to do that. And they said, maybe if we did like the haunted house earlier in the year, they could do like a $5, $5 for admission, which is both for parks and grounds, for like $2 of that candy. And that that candy could be placed at the building, like the fire department, all the candy that's collected, fire department, the police department, and village hall, for on the day of Halloween, because kids, you know, care for, care for the village businesses. And that way, they can provide candy and we don't have to pay for it, I think we would like, so I figured I'd pass along.
You know, the old haunted house used to be put on by, if we did, was one of the ones, and the funds were used for equipment, that's good funds. So they really.
Well, not for the, the Christmas decorations, they used to have a haunted house, just 320 to buy baskets. I don't know how much money we paid, but.
They made a lot, and the village passed out a lot of.
It was a lot of work.
I remember it being scary, that's all I remember. Oh, there we went to the stairs and they grabbed my leg, so, oh.
If you only know who ran the basket, literally exterior.
I'm just saying, the stairs, the stairs were scary. So even like the community center or something, I just figured, you know, that's something that I had to do for, for next year.
It's a lot of work.
Sure it is, it'd be fun though, I mean, I'd work it, I wouldn't work it though. Because I can scare people, I just love to be scared.
Right, anything else? Justice Moore. Justice Bassett. Justice Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let all the residents know that we have our flyers in the back of our neighborhood watch meeting. And if you would like to be a block club captain, or if you don't mind passing out flyers on your block, let people know about our neighborhood watch meetings and when they are, I would encourage you to take some flyers on the night tag, let your neighbors know we're not looking for more block club captains. And I just want to ask a question there, I'm going to the board, is it permissible for the neighborhood watch to give with your right of grant? For neighborhood watch, what, turn to your board for that.
I'm going to, I'm going to play the microphone.
The platform grant for neighborhood watch, okay, because that's something that we, I think I want to add to this, that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, I will be hosting a town hall meeting at Rickover at 7:00 to 8:30. This will be the last one at Rickover. It will be the last one at Rickover and we will be finding another location. I was not aware that our meetings were open meetings that are sensitive, because, you know, I invited everyone from the community, however, if that's the case, then I guess we have to count the people that come to the door or elected officials that come in, I guess first is, first, and that would be it. But I was never aware of that, but it must, I must be doing something right if people are trying to do that. And I'm hoping everyone comes out. It'll be, again, right behind us at Rickover on Torres Avenue from 7:00 to 8:30. And the topic will be an open topic. And that's all I have.
The last Saturday, we had a great day. There was a lot going on in South Village, we had the senior community meeting, we had the president of the house, and the top of the government was out. And we had a great day. Also had the opportunity to follow the government around, three locations, of course, I was here in South Village and then in Dalton and in Markham. So had a, had a very full day, running all day, so.
I have been working very hard for the governor's office, the IEP, of course, the attorney general's office. I know there's been a lot of questions to ask, you know, what's this money for, what are we going to do with it? The $4.8 million is to pay off the, the IEP loan that we have. And to see how important that is, is that IEP loan that we received was $4.3 million, which had been paid back over 20 years. Over 20 years, the village is going to have to pay approximately $260,000 and some change every year for 20 years after that's paid off. So now, we don't have that burden of adding that amount to come up with every year. Plus, it also frees up some additional money that we have for continuing additional infrastructure work and. infrastructure work, and we figure two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars is going to cost services for the village, it will possibly cost employees over, over twenty years, so we are excited about that money. Mohan's working on film proper paperwork, I will work closely with the attorney general's office, working closely with the IEP, to get these funds in, to get the loan paid off, so we are excited about that. This next Saturday, I will be in Springfield, so we applied for a two-point thousand dollar grant, kind of give you an idea what that grant money for is for. This next Thursday, I will be in Springfield before the IDR, for this grant, but it's for Arrowhead Park, and it's for installing entry signs at both locations, energy-efficient lighting, completely rehabbing our baseball fields, adding six eight-foot three-row bleacher seats that are ADA accessible, batting cages, replacing the eight-foot playground, adding a quarter of a mile walking and jogging trail, along with ADA accessible, adding a soccer field and equipment in between those, those walking fields, installing, again, parkside drove by two fifteens, and adding energy-efficient lighting in that area, so that it's more lit up, and constructing driveway and needing parking lots into that area, so. This Thursday, we've made it to this phase, what we do is we apply for it, we put together a whole type of plan, we submitted the plan, either you got accepted, or you got rejected, we were accepted, we'll go through another phase, this is the last phase, we'll go through the board, who's going to do the final probing, and we'll give a presentation, it's a short presentation, it's like about three minutes, so I'm dragging, always Springfield, you have a three-minute presentation, but it's an important presentation, and it's a South Village one that needs us to be able to update our equipment, new playground equipment, updating our fields, so.
It's Saturday.
What's that?
It's Saturday.
This Thursday. The twenty-third, so I guess it's next Thursday, so next Thursday, we'll strike a tender. But there's a lot going on, I tell everyone, when the South Village is moving forward, there is a lot happening in our community, and we're going to continue moving forward, we're going to continue reaching out to Springfield, continue working with our representatives, and working on behalf of the residents of South Village, so. Just going to update what's going on, but that said, I guess for your motion to adjourn.
I'm just trying to answer clearly, so the four-point eight million dollars that the governor is going to give to South Village, that's going to go to pay off the loan that we owe, first, a whole four-point eight million dollars, first.
You got the few.
Come back and pay off on the, okay.